Scott County Board of Commissioners to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda?
Nope.
If not, it shall stand approved as distributed. Next on our agenda is the minutes from the February 5th, 2019 county board meeting. I assume you've had a chance to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'm sure I'll move the minutes.
I'll second them.
So I moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2019 county board meeting. I will abstain, since I was absent from that meeting, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor of approving the February 5th, 2019 county board minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Next, we're at the point on the agenda where anyone who wants to address the board about something not on the agenda can come to the podium and tell us about their subject. Anyone here to address the board on an item not on the agenda? See none, we'll move on to... I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong agenda.
Today's the 19th of March?
Yeah, yeah, wow. People, let's start over on this. Something came up. Thank you very much, Deb. It's March 19th, 2019. Please, let's reflect that change. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items that have been previously reviewed, subject of workshops and other meetings. So I'll go ahead and read the items on the consent agenda and we'll find out if any need to be pulled for further consideration. 5.1, to approve rezoning of 37 and 1/2 acres from Rural Residential Reserve District to Rural Residential Single Family District, the preliminary and final plat of Sunrise Ridge, Jailed Shimick Route 1 properties, and Matt Ryland Builders applicants and property owners. This is consisting of seven lots on 37 and 1/2 acres, and it will vacate a portion of a conservation easement in Section 25 of Spring Lake Township. 5.2, to approve the renewal application for a 3.2 beer license for 2019 for Andrew Hoss doing business as Saint Benedict Baseball Association located in Helena Township. Item 5.3, adopt Resolution Number 2019-033 revoking county state aid highway status on county state aid highway 37 from county state aid highway 15 to Trunk Highway 21 in the city of New Prague. 5.4, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-034, entering into a turnback and cooperative construction agreement for county state highway, county road 37, from Trunk Highway 19 to Trunk Highway 21 within the city of New Prague, and authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed conveying county highway 37 to the city of New Prague. 5.5, to approve records of dispersments and approved claims. 5.6, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-029, approving an agreement with Dakota County for hosting services of the PH Doc software and ratifying the PH Doc Maintenance and Support Agreement with Minnesota County's Computer Cooperative. 5.7, to approve hiring of an additional jail nurse. And 5.8, to approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the eight items on the consent agenda. Any discussion or motions?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
So I moved and seconded to approve the eight items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we're on to item 6.1, and we will receive an update on spring flood risk and mitigation actions in Karina, Scott County. Thank you so much for all that's been going on, and let us know where we're at.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Scott Oz. I'm the Director of Emergency Management, and this morning I'm going to give you an update on what our current status is with flooding in the Scott County area. As you've seen on the news, we've had a lot of impact to the city of Jordan in the last few days. Good news is, just to let everyone know, we have started pumping operations in Valley Green Trailer Park this morning, so the water levels are going down. We're very hopeful we'll be able to get people reunited and back into their homes very soon. I just want to highlight some of the risks. We are going to be hearing a lot on the news in the next couple of days about the risk of river flooding. If anyone's looked at the flood gauges recently, you see the Cottonwood River down in New Ulm is skyrocketing. That's heading our way. Additionally, as we've talked about in the past, there's a lot of snowpack from Anqueto up through Redwood Falls, and we're expected to see some very warm temperatures starting this weekend, and we're also expected to see rain coming this weekend, which is going to lead to a rapid melt situation through the entire Minnesota River Valley. And eventually, that water's going to be coming towards us. I want to give some credit to one of my former neighbors in Belle Plaine for taking this picture back in 2014, when... Thank you to Facebook for capturing and saving all of the moments of our lives forever, so they can be archived and retrieved. This was my neighborhood back in 2014. We talked a lot about, we talked a lot about the Blakely Flood and the impact of roads and public infrastructure. This is my neighborhood. If we look to the right side of that, where it looks like there's a lake, that was actually a stormwater retention pond that overflowed, and you can see everything in front of the vehicle there is water, and that stormwater retention pond actually overflowed until it went up about two blocks and met with another stormwater retention pond, and there's just a couple feet of water sitting there. So while we really are going to focus on public infrastructure impacts right now with this presentation, I just want to remind the commissioners and members of the public that the impact to people's lives is real. In this case, there was a house just up the street that had a completely flooded basement because it was right next to that stormwater retention pond, and that threat continues to exist all across the county. So I'm going to kind of walk you through our river flooding risks first, starting down in the Blakely area. The Blakely Bridge is actually demonstrated right here, so I want to show you, we've got some historic reference photos. So when the water level at the Jordan Gauge showed that it was at 33 feet, this is an aerial photo on the left showing what the actual impact was to that area. In the background with the red and blue colored scheme, this is directly from our County JS data showing where the 100-year floodplain is and indicating the level of risk that those areas had. Red being the highest, the areas of blue being less than a foot, and yellow areas being about a foot of flooding within the 100-year floodplain. So you can actually see at the Blakely Bridge here that the thread, or the threat of flooding is actually further north initially on the Sibley County side. That typically goes underwater about 728 feet, and right now we're sitting about four feet below that threat level. So Sibley County Road will go under, which will cause us to close that bridge in the near future. As we move forward up towards the Belle Plaine Water Treatment Plant, again at 33 feet on the Jordan River Gauge, we have an aerial photo from back in 2010 showing us what the water was doing towards that city water treatment plant. It's obviously built low, which is good for water treatment plants. It helps to have gravity move waste down, but this is going to be one of the areas of public infrastructure that's going to be greatly threatened if we get a significant flood event, which quite frankly, the data's showing it's leading us to. This is an area that will likely need to be sandbagged, and in the past, this has experienced direct flooding into that facility. Moving further up the river, we start looking at some direct impacts to West Suvista area in the, I believe, Sand Creek Township. Again, there's some residences that are going to be directly impacted, and we expect to see township road impacts. Additionally, if we look at the Jordan River Bridge, that's a major path for many of our residents to get over into Carver County and up to other parts of the metro. That river bridge does have a closure point at 26.7 feet, and that is the point in time when water's proceeding to cover the roadway in the low section of Jonathan Carver Parkway into Carver County. Again, another historical photo to give us reference, this is the Scott County side of the bridge at when that gauge was indicating 33 feet. So you can see the residence that's there, and the road that's on the Scott County side of the bridge is inundated with water. That bridge was rebuilt a number of years ago, and the bridge itself remained out of the water at 33 feet.
Madam Chair, could I ask Mr. Oz a question?
Yes.
Scott, good morning.
Good morning.
On that corridor in particular, that's our side of the road at 33 feet.
That is.
How bad is it on the Carver side? I'm thinking, here's my question, what would it take to flood proof this road? A lot of work with Carver County, or could we add some fill or culvert there? What do you think?
So a real solution for that section of road on Jonathan Carver Parkway would be something similar to the 101 land bridge that was completed.
A land bridge, okay.
The...theoretically, you could fill and raise the elevation of that road, however, if you do that, you're effectively creating a dam that then pushes water higher downstream, or, I'm sorry, upstream, and would create greater risk. So that's where a land bridge is really the solution for that kind of a long stretch of road that has to be...
And that's really on the Carver side that needs to happen?
Correct. That's the low sections of this road are on the Carver County side. We still, in this case, have a small area that's impacted, but the area of Carver County that's impacted is significant. So a long land bridge is really the only viable solution to not create further flood risk for upstream areas.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I was just, that bridge was just completed when I was starting here, Commissioner, and that was one of the reasons they did not build a higher bridge. The cost and the benefit cost to it was too high at that point for a county bridge that was on a major collector, minor material type road, and so they do not opt to make that investment at that point, and so that's why we're where we are at today.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, that bridge is an area that closes on a somewhat regular basis, and it does impact a lot of our commuting members of our community, because it is, quite frankly, as someone who lived in Belle Plaine for a number of years, it's very convenient to go up there and avoid the ferry bridge in the morning. So we have a lot of our constituents that are using that road, and it's a significant inconvenience when that does get flooded. Moving on to the current flood gauge, and this is just a link to the National Weather Service's website, so they are displaying real-time or close-to-real-time flood information and river gauge information based on the gauge that's on that bridge and some other bridges as we proceed further upstream. You can see right now we're at 23.47 as of right now with the latest reading, and you can see that the current projection goes out to 29.3 feet sometime out. I will tell you that the current projections that are conducted by the Weather Service include precipitation within the next 48 hours. So we're expecting this received precipitation sometime this weekend, and that is not included within this modeling. So we can expect that this will probably go up a little bit as the precipitation starts impacting our area. But based on this, it's pretty clear that we are going to see impacts to this bridge in the very short term. Moving into the city of Jordan, one of the big risks we have in the city of Jordan is the Sand Creek. Sand Creek has actually proven to be a very troublesome spot over the last week, and one of the things we experienced with Sand Creek with the rapid melt and the rapid rise of that creek is that the creek was very frozen. It was frozen solid, and this creek was all the way down to New Prague, and there's a number of branches to it. What happened was the creek levels rose so quickly that the water was lifting these massive boulders of ice, and that was all flowing downstream. As it was flowing downstream, it was stripping trees of their bark and actually taking out a large number of trees where they were getting in the way of these, you know, thousand-plus pound ice chunks in the creek, and it was just taking trees, it was uprooting trees. Then not only is ice flowing through the river, but now we have trees flowing the river as well. This has always been a risk area within the city because that creek is susceptible to spring flooding. It is protected by a series of burms as it proceeds through town, and the city of Jordan and the water management organization are, have been actively engaged in trying to find a real mitigation strategy for this creek in the city of Jordan. They're looking at a lot of options, including diversion of water supplies or reinforcing the berm structure. So they're looking at all kinds of options, trying to find out what the long-term solution is to reduce some miss, to reduce some of the risk here in Jordan. We have some historical photos of what ice jam clearing is done, and typically, when ice flow is on top of the creek and the water level's high, it'll proceed until it hits either a bend in the creek or it hits something like one of our bridges. At that point in time, it just starts backing up and it creates a dam, and that's what forces the water behind that dam to rapidly increase and expose risk to the community. Again, historic picture from 2014 and flash flooding in Valley Green Trailer Park. So we're moving on to, this is the real-time gauge for Sand Creek. This gauge is located on the Highway 282 Bridge over Sand Creek, which is located near Rota Markers for a reference point for everyone. So you can see what happened as we proceeded into Wednesday morning, we started seeing the impacts of the rain and the three days of rain and warmth coming through, and you can see we started to see the point where the ice jam started very rapidly rising the level of that creek. We actually did get to a record level of creek. It's going to be verified yet by the National Weather Service, but a record level on that creek was recorded by the gauge at over 12 feet. The Jordan Public Works crews were actively working throughout Wednesday, Thursday, when they were getting reports of ice jams at the early stages of the creek in the city of Jordan to try and remove those jams. Historically, what we do is, as was shown in the photo, you get a backhoe out and you break it up and get it, and get it moving along, and once it's moving along, the flow hopefully takes care of it. Because of the large quantity and size of the ice in this case, as they would break it up at one spot and stop localized flooding behind it there, it would flow and hit the next bridge or hit the next turn in the creek and create more problems. So it was a continuous, continuous problem. The nice thing you can see is we're making some really good progress, and most of the town has reduced risk compared to where we were just a few days ago. But to say the least, it was pretty hairy for a little while there. Moving on up into the Shakopee area, and the Shakopee area's historically had some river flooding risk. You can see from this photo that we have done a successful mitigation project by raising and building this land bridge on the County Road 101 Bridge over to Carver County with our partners, Carver County. This bridge is built to withstand or to keep traffic going in a 1965-era or style flooding event. So the points we need to watch with this bridge is that the steel beams on the bottom of this bridge are located on the lowest point at 717 feet with the bridge deck at 723 feet. So there is still a risk that this flooding this year could impact that bridge, and we'll be watching it daily as well as our partners within transportation. But we know where those risk points are, and as we watch the water coming up and down, we know when potential impacts of this bridge are going to occur.
Could you, Madam Chair, could you remind me, how much higher is that new bridge than that highest water? Was it 65?
65 is illustrated in this picture. I don't recall the exact flood level on 65. I don't know, someone from Lisa's here in the audience, I can...
I can tell you what it was, it was a Jordan, 35.07.
Yeah, I don't recall if Lisa knows offhand, or she can quick Google it and jump in and interfere.
But so is it, is it three or four feet higher than that biggest...
No, Tony, isn't, or Lisa, isn't the low steel of the bridge about the 1965 flood? And so if it gets to that level, they can monitor it, but they can't allow it to get to the six feet of the deck. They'd have to close it before we were that high. They can let it come up on the low steel some. I don't know exactly what that amount is, though.
Oh, okay.
Lisa Freeze, the bridge was constructed to be right at that 65 flood level, so I think it's a little, the bridge, the lowest member's a little higher than the 65 flood level, probably less than a half a foot, and it can go underwater, unlike the 41 bridge, which can't, the low member cannot go underwater, and that's why they closed that one earlier. But the point at which it needs to be closed depends on ice jams, logs, other kinds of debris that are coming down the river, so that's why at that point, there is a high monitoring requirement.
Thank you, Lisa. You said that way better than I could fumble through. So I appreciate that. Thanks for the rescue. Moving on, and this is really good, just to give everyone a reference on, you know, how the flood risk imagery actually correlates to an impact. We know Valley Fair is in a low area and it floods, but you can see the areas where we have kind of the orange or the lighter red colors, and you can see the corresponding impact to the parking lot of Valley Fair. And see that this picture taken at 33.25 feet on the Jordan Gauge shows that at that level, we see impacts into this area. I should note also that one of our threatened areas of the city of Shakopee is actually Valley Haven Trailer Park, which sits right next to Danger Fields. Everyone knows the stories of Danger Fields having to flood their basements on a somewhat regular basis with clean water so that river water can't flow into it. The trailer park is located right around 720 feet, so that is an area that has needed to be sandbagged in the past to preserve life and property in that area. There are also some road impacts as we move further into Savage. Once we get into Savage, river flooding is a high risk for the city of Savage. The areas in the port are all within the floodplain. One of the threatened areas we have in the city of Savage is that Eagle Creek and Credit River Creek can be susceptible to having, normally they dump into the river, and when the river gets really high, that water can start backflowing into those creeks and impacting residential areas and commercial areas within that area. We've already seen some ice jamming that's been occurring on the Credit River and seeing how that's impacted some yards. To this point, I don't believe we've had any actual direct impact to basements, but yards have been flooded as a result of that, and Savage Public Works has been working through to mitigate and stop those threats. Also want to point out city of Prior Lake. Prior Lake has historically had some lake flooding risk. 2014, we saw that flooding risk impact Prior Lake. I'm going to switch over, see this work. So this is the current flood gauge on Prior Lake. Prior Lake's watershed has opened the low-flow gate to try and encourage water to get out before we got to this point of flooding. However, you can see over the past week, we've seen a significant rise in Prior Lake. When Prior Lake gets to about 903.9 is where we see a number of houses on the north side of the lake begin to be flooded. So we need to be actively monitoring Prior Lake, and we're concerned about the impact of roads and some of the residences, especially on the north side of the road where we saw flooding back in 2014. Historically, we get water on the road in '21. I know a project's been done recently to try and minimize that threat. And I also want to point out to the board and to the public that Scott County's a county filled with water. We have lakes, we have streams, we have rivers, we have creeks, waters everywhere within Scott County area, and the risk is not just limited to our river risk. We've thankfully made it through a lot of our melt, and a lot of our snowpack is gone in this area. So once we get into the next week to week and a half, we should, we should be getting kind of clear of the immediate threat of overland flooding from rapid melt. But in the next week to week and a half, we still have some pretty high risks because there's a lot of snow still on the ground, and we still have a very solid layer of frost in the ground that's preventing a lot of the water from being soaked up. So as the frost starts coming out and as the snow melts, and depending on how much precipitation we end up getting this weekend, there's still a risk of widespread flooding around the county that's going to impact people and property. So just to point out some thresholds, if we do get to a point where we have more than $245,000 worth of damage and services to public infrastructure, we become eligible for the State Disaster Assistance Fund. Right now, that fund is not, it's empty. It owes Duluth some money, but the legislature's been promising to restock it, and I think with the widespread flooding that's occurring this year, everybody's aware of the impacts that are occurring. So that's our first threshold. As we start collecting public infrastructure damage reports and we start tallying the amount of overtime we're spending and the amount of resources that we're spending to fight this flood through all of our jurisdictions within the county, as we get closer to this, we will be considering coming back to you as a board and asking for a declaration of an emergency at that point in time. The city of Jordan, at their city council meeting last night, did declare a local emergency. That's basically indicating that they are starting to exhaust their resources as a local unit of government, and they need assistance. That's the first step that's required before we can ultimately get any kind of aid to them. So they've declared last night at their meeting, we're going to be actively monitoring. At one point in time last week, based on how the damages were coming in, I anticipated that we would be asking for a declaration this morning. However, we will not be doing that, and there's a few reasons why. The biggest one being that once we, as a county, start a declaration process, we have 72 hours to complete what's called a preliminary damage assessment and get our numbers to the state, and ultimately, that's what would go to FEMA. If we do that too quickly and we're not at the threshold, we could actually define that we have ultimately two separate events. One was the rapid melt, and then the other could be a river flooding, which would be another emergency coming later. From a fiscal standpoint, we want to collect all of our damages, understand what the real impact is, and be able to put all those damages together in one package that gets us the most amount of aid possible. So at this point in time, we're not intending to declare at this time because we need to gather more information and specifically gather more details about what our costs are from the flood fight. But as we proceed, that's a very real possibility that we will need to declare an emergency at the county level. Going to highlight some things that occurred over the last few days. So Valley Green Trailer Park, obviously, has sustained some very significant damage, and we've displaced a lot of people. About half the residents were initially evacuated. There's about 1,000 people that live in the park. As you could see from the earlier picture of the river, or of the creek flood gauge, water levels in Jordan spiked very, very quickly, and this was caused by the massive amounts of ice and debris that were floating down that river. I should stop calling it a river, it's actually supposed to be a creek, but it looks like a river lately. So here's a good example of what this looks like. You know, it looks like it's just snow and ice that's kind of floating on the water, and it's not that threatening, until you consider that each one of those ice chunks is just a mass of, you know, probably 1,000-plus-pound chunk of ice that's been compressed for all winter long, and in measuring those chunks, they're about two and a half to three feet tall, and in many cases, they're five feet wide and five feet deep. So these are just massive bricks of ice that are flowing down the river.
Scott, was that picture, was that on last Thursday or Friday, was that?
That's...
That's a recent one there?
Right before the evacuation order.
Yep, so that's...
Just the other day, okay.
So we're working through kind of a, from a timeline of this is what was coming down the river that was starting to clog up at these different points of the river and causing that spike. So this one, again, another picture, I think I sent this one to the commissioners as well, just another picture of what all that ice flow looks like, and you can see just the large amount of tree debris that's floating through there. As these ice chunks have come through, they've actually stripped bark right off many trees, and they've actually completely uprooted other trees, and now those trees, in addition to the ice, are in the creek level moving fast. So these two pictures were actually taken one minute apart near the entrance of Valley Green. So it shows you, yes, there was some water starting to flow on the street, and it looks like a... like a somewhat dangerous flooding situation. Then, one minute later, you can see just how much more water was there. It puts in perspective how quickly the water did rise in the area and how truly dire the situation was for a few moments. Valley Green Trailer Park has one entrance and exit, so a thousand residents in their homes have one avenue of escape, and this is it. So in one minute time, we saw a massive, massive change. Some of the actions that were taken, the Jordan Police and Jordan Fire were the primary agencies on determining that evacuation of the park was necessary. The Jordan Police Chief was the incident commander, working with the Jordan Fire Chief that was on scene, and they identified that an evacuation was going to be necessary based on what they were seeing, and contacted us for assistance. Scott County's role to that, first on the left, some of you who were in the area may have received an emergency alert on your phone. Scott County Emergency Management through the iPOS system, which is a tool that we have through FEMA, we were able to send a message to people in the affected area, and this is actually a screenshot of that message indicating that we had opened the shelter at the school, warning people of the flash flooding and giving them a route to go for shelter. We're actually limited right now by the wireless emergency alert system to ninety characters, and this is eighty-nine characters. So we pushed our limits on how much text we could go. Would have been nice to describe a lot more, but we got there. Thankfully, that is actually changing this year, and it's going to be moving up to about a hundred sixty characters, three hundred sixty-five characters. So we're going to have more capacity moving soon. Second, on the right, you see our evacuation go-kit. One of the lessons we learned when the Super Bowl came to town is that the Red Cross has a metro-wide sheltering capability of five hundred people. So when the Super Bowl came to town, a lot of the resources were hovering around Minneapolis. If something bad happened in Minneapolis, the resources were there, shelters were being set up and staffed for that capacity of people. With the events that were occurring out on the Shakopee, Mudwakan, and Sioux community area, we got very concerned that waiting for those resources to arrive would take too long, and that we, as a local emergency management department, needed to do something. So we, as a result of the Super Bowl, engaged in planning, and we've created go-kits that are in our cars, and we've got actually four of these kits. These kits are all consuming and all encompassing, kits that contain registration information, wristbands to help people, signs to let people know where to register. So we basically set up a go-kit so we can take a location that's been identified as temporary shelter and quickly get people there and have them register. As a result of that preparation, when the order for evacuation came out, a number of our volunteers, you can see members of our SafeCom unit and the Sheriff's Reserve Unit, quickly responded, and this is inside the Jordan High School. So we actually had our volunteers in this temporary shelter set up within twenty minutes of the time of the evacuation order. At that time, Jordan Fire Department was going door-to-door within Valley Green Trailer Park, identifying all the people who wanted to leave. Should note, in the state of Minnesota, we can issue an evacuation order. However, we don't have the authority to supersede the Constitution. If someone wants to remain in their homes even during a flooding event, they can say, "No, I'm not leaving," and we will allow them to stay in their homes. So a number of residents decided to stay, a number of residents did, however, evacuate. So you can see our volunteers doing a great job. We were there so quickly to get them processed right after the initial evacuation was done. A total of seventy-eight people actually came into our shelter that was set up at the school and registered with us. A number of other people actually got bussed up and then found other places right away, so they didn't come into our shelter. About eleven-thirties when the Red Cross Shelter was actually activated. One thing that was unique to this event, and at least unique within Scott County, is we learned after Hurricane Katrina that people will not evacuate their homes in a disaster unless they know their pets are going to be taken care of. The Federal Pets Act, and I forget what the acronym actually stands for, but it's easy to remember, requires that whenever we evacuate and shelter humans in a human shelter, we're also mandated under that act to provide sheltering for pets. So we've been working, and we actually, as a part of our full-scale exercise in May, did a drill on establishing a pet shelter and running through the process of sheltering pets and registering those pets, and that came in very handy as we saw the need, because there's a lot of residents who said, "I'm not leaving unless I can take my pets." So we were able to tell them, yes, you can take your pets. They were able to take their pets on the school buses with them as they were evacuated up to high school. Then we, as we were in the process of using deputies and volunteers, we got the cages set up inside the regional training center out at the scale building. We were able to set up the pet shelter and then be able to bring all those pets safely to that shelter where we've had volunteers twenty-four-seven with those pets, taking care of the pets. And the residents who were evacuated are very thankful, knowing that there's a safe place, their pets are being cared for, there's plenty of food. In fact, many of these pets are probably getting walked more than they've ever been walked before. So it's, there's some adorable pets that are out there, and they've gotten great care from our volunteers. So we've gotten a lot of questions on, you know, why this is happening this year. I want to kind of give the board some information that came from the National Weather Service on what the risk is in this storm event. So these were the projections that they made back in the beginning of March on what our current flood risk was going to be for this area. You can see, this is the Minnesota River at Jordan. In a traditional year, the blue line is the probabilities of flooding at different levels. This year is the black line. So you can see the significantly higher risk of flooding at the city of Jordan. A lot of the models are pointing to a near fifty percent chance of a sixty-five grade flood in this area. So that's got us quite concerned. Even more concerning is as we move down to the city of Savage, again, the blue being a traditional year and the black line being what's going on right now. It gives you perspective on what the real risk is because of the just vast amount of water that's in the watershed that's ultimately going to come into this river. Little side note, one of our volunteers is a teacher at the In Prairie Spanish Immersion Program, and she's asked her students to come up with solutions on how to bring it. So second graders thought we should get an icebreaker from the Great Lakes and bring it down to the creek? Or take something really heavy and put it up high and drop it on the ice? So we've had a lot of, a lot of really positive, really positive feedback from members of the community who want to help. We also received assistance from the Shakopee, Mudwakan, and Sioux community. They have a drone program. If anyone gets sick from this, I'll just stop it, so say the word. But this was an asset that we brought out with their assistance to give you an aerial perspective on just how widespread the water is and why this is more than just a simple problem to fix. If you look down as they steady it down there, that's the creek, all that white channel. You can see that this entire creek bed is just loaded with these huge boulders of ice. This is actually located east and north of the city of Jordan. So you can see that the areas surrounding the actual jam itself are submerged. There's areas that are six feet or greater in depth around this area, so the risk to bring a backhoe into this area and try and clear it out is just too high. We can't get somebody killed to try and get in there to clear this jam. But you can also see...
Scott, didn't Lassure County lose a highway worker trying to clear Culver here a couple years ago?
MINDOT, a MINDOT worker down by St. Peter was trying to do clearance, and in process of doing that, the backhoe tipped over and the operator drowned. We've also looked at considerations like bringing an airboat out. Someone in the state did try that. They brought an airboat out to try and get explosives on to the beginning of the ice jam. In process of doing that, they actually rolled and totaled the boat with people in it in the middle of a flood situation. So the solutions are limited on what we can do here to get rid of this ice. You can just see just how extensive the ice flow is and how large of an area that this is that's impacting our community. And you can also see that the creek has done what rivers do, and when there's been a jam, it's finding ways to push water laterally around it, and it's ultimately going to carve probably a new element to the creek around where that ice jam is, and the creek's probably going to look a little different as we move forward. So I just want to step back here on... On a look at the county. So this is the damage assessment application that GIS has created for us, and it gives you an idea of how widespread we've had direct impacts within the county of the rapid melt. This is a tracking tool that we're using to locate areas where roads have had to be closed because of bridges, or we're getting reports of water in basements, or there's been some kind of an evacuation or emergency action that has to be taken. So this is a tool that we've been using to track all those incoming reports, so we can see real time. And the telling part about this is that this is not just a Jordan event already. It's impacting us countywide, and you can see just how many people are impacted, how many different roads are impacted throughout the area. So I also want to just really take a time to highlight kind of the successes we've had within this event. We've had volunteers from all over the place come out, I mean, coming out of the woodwork. When we notified, or when we identified that we're going to set up a pet shelter, we had people calling into the nine-one center saying, "I run a rescue, I'm in Prior Lake, I'm more than happy to bring kennels." Someone from Belle Plaine saying the same thing, "We're happy to help you out." It really highlights the strength of the community here. We had so many people who were willing to come in and volunteer in short term. I mean, people willing to sit in this pet shelter twenty-four-seven, people spending all night. These are people who have real jobs, and yet they're dedicating all this time. So it really, really shows the quality of people we have in Scott County and the willingness that people have demonstrated to help out their friends, and in this case, many times strangers. So we need to thank all those volunteers, the people who've come in and offered assistance. It's really reflective of what a great place this is to live. So I just want to publicly thank them. I also want to thank our volunteer coordinator, Kara, who is here. She's been a rock star in keeping and maintaining staffing through the pet shelter with volunteers. We have over two-hundred hours of volunteer time in just the pet shelter. Twenty-four-seven, we've got volunteers who are there, walking dogs, feeding them, making sure they're taken care of, and it's, I really got to thank all the great work of the volunteers, and we got a great volunteer coordinator who's been a rock star. And I also want to point out that Public Works has been working their tails off. Joe's never going to be the person to be up here talking about working the sixteen-to-eighteen-hour days he's been working, but I can tell you, he's been here from the beginning and working side-by-side with us when we have meetings in Jordan, trying to figure out how to resolve the problem. He's been here. So I just want to throw out some appreciation to the staff we've had that have done a great job in helping us, and the city has gone through a lot in Jordan. We've seen a lot of people around the county who are suffering some impacts, and unfortunately, we know that with the river flooding that's coming, we're going to see more impacts. So some of the steps that have been taken, we've been in touch with MINDOT already at trying to provide additional bridge capacity with an additional lane. We'll be pushing them very hard as the water's rising faster than it was originally projected to do. Originally, the Weather Service said, "We're going to see a crest from the rain event we had, where we had the three days of warm melting, and then it's going to go down a little bit, but stay relatively high, and then when the snowpack started melting, it was going to go up higher." Well, it's going up, and it's still going up. So we haven't seen that real crest yet, and with the weather we're predicted to get starting Friday and into Saturday, and continuously after that, we can expect there's going to be a lot of water coming out of the system and coming into this area. So we're taking preparations, we're working with the right people, and we've got the right team on board to take care of our community, but we're still going to see impacts. We're for sure going to be seeing bridge closures at Blakely, Jordan, Highway Forty-One, one-on-one, I think, I hope, is high enough to sustain the flood. We'll learn, and we'll be monitoring actively, and thankfully, the ferry bridge is high. But I point out to the board that I'm very concerned about the thirty-five W Bridge and the low spots there. If that does close or get lane restrictions, it's going to drive more traffic up one-sixty-nine, and it's going to be difficult for some time for our people.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for that report. Thank you for keeping us updated, especially over the last five days. I know your workdays have been just as long as Joe's, and we appreciate it. Thank you for, you know, emergency management staff, the sheriff's deputies, Public Works, our volunteers. It's amazing how quickly everyone pulled together. I only heard good things from Jordan about the work of the county and the cooperation from the county. So, thank you very much. Keep us updated, and any further comments?
I would just say, if you live on whatever, have a plan B to get across the river at some point, because it's going to be tough, in my opinion, right?
The threat's real, and it's coming fast.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item seven point one, very timely with the recent report. Paul Nelson is going to talk to us about a sandbag filling machine.
Paul, do you want a better setup than that?
Yes, thank you, yeah. Or not thank you, yeah. Madam Chair and Commissioners, good morning. I'm going to make three real quick points and then just go into theme of three, three things that this RBA does. First of all, staff is just a little nervous, as you can tell about the situation that we're in. But that said, the idea of purchasing a sandbag filling machine is not something that just suddenly came out of the blue. It's actually in our all-hazards mitigation plan. And a couple of weeks ago, when we were reviewing it, I was reminded that that was in there. And then also, over the last couple of new weeks, as I was finalizing how we ended up twenty-nineteen with respect to the Scott Watershed Management Organization, I saw that we came under budget, and so there may be some funds there to do this. And so I talked with Ron and Scott about that. So one, it's really not just totally a new idea out of the blue. Second, you have authorities as, not just the Scott County Board, but the Board of the Scott Watershed Management Organization do capital projects and do emergency projects. You have that authority under Minnesota Statutes one oh three B. Emergency projects, if you find, and it's in the RBA here, that conditions exist that present a clear and imminent danger to the health or welfare of the people, the Watershed Management Organization, or local unit of government, and that to delay action would prejudice the interests of the people, the Watershed Management Organization, local unit of government, or would likely cause permanent harm. So you have those authorities. And then third, I want to say, as I mentioned before, Scott WMO, we did come under budget last year, so we were adding about sixty thousand dollars more to fund balance at the end of the year than we had planned. Now, the machine we're talking about is about twenty-five thousand dollar cost, and I want to go on the record, the other thirty-five thousand dollars I want to keep. But, so there is that, and since it's coming out of fund balance, it's not affecting the levy. And as I look forward, you know, years for the WMO are going to be tied into the future, but this wouldn't jeopardize sort of the long-term strategies of the WMO if you choose to do this. Now, the action is three-part. It is declaring sufficient emergency justification to make the purchase. It is then also amending the Scott WMO plan to add this as a capital item in our plan. And then it is then amending the twenty-nineteen budget of the special taxing district of the Scott WMO. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Beard.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, is this machine, you might have just said it, is it portable, so we can move it from spot to spot rather easily? Because I'm thinking, big county, big river, we got one machine?
Miss, Madam Chair and Commissioner Beard, it is, you know, I believe you can put it on a trailer. Ron and Scott are more familiar with it. But the idea is, since we're looking at using this countywide, you would stage it in probably one area, people would come with trailers to pick up sandbags. Because you may need it in Jordan, you may need the sandbags there, and you may need the sandbags in Prior Lake at the same time. But they're more of the, I'm, they're more of the logistics experts.
Thank you, Paul. So that is exactly the plan. We would take a centrally located area where we would set up operations, someplace where we have basic facilities for volunteers, and we'd start the sandbagging operation. So really, the process of sandbagging is traditionally, you pick up a sandbag and you get a shovel... you get a shovel and fill it and then you tie it. Uh, what this type of machine does is you fill a hopper under the top, the sandbaggers will take their sandbag, pull it under a chute, which is basically like a funnel coming out of the top. They can either through a lever or using their feet, open that chute, it'll dump the appropriate amount of material in the sandbag and then they're on to the next sandbag. So a very labor-intensive process that is, is tough on people's backs, can be turned into a much less uh, time-consuming process and ultimately you can fill bags faster. But as Paul alluded to, the plan we have is to centrally stage that resource because uh, we can do a lot of sandbags out of that resource very quickly compared to manually doing it. And then the capability of then deploying that on, deploying, deploying those bags on trucks or trailers to this location that we're, that they're needed allows us to most efficiently serve the public here.
Commissioner Alrick.
Well, I, I support this, but I, I do have a question. When I read this, I thought, well gee, this sounds like a, a great thing for scale to get involved with, that potentially. Uh, and if you were to say, uh, if you had another way to buy another one, would you, would you want, would there be a need to have two staging areas within a large county like this? I mean, if we, if you did and, and, but we couldn't afford it here, uh, perhaps scale would, uh, would be willing to look at this or interested in looking this as a need. But if you think one is enough, but it doesn't seem to me that if you had multiple locations where there was flooding, that, that one location would be adequate.
So it's a great question. We're, this is really a force enabler from a sandbagging operation. If you have people manually filling sandbags, it's, it's a very slow process, uh, but a machine like this can ultimately turn and, turn over, you know, hundreds to a thousand sandbags per hour, uh, because you're much more efficient in the process. So with that being said, the capabilities there, would it be nice to have another machine down the road? Uh, I, I think that's a reasonable thing to consider. I think from a fiscal standpoint, we should evaluate the capability uh, now and in the future, especially with river flooding. River flooding, we generally have some heads up. Flash flooding is, is far less predictable, um, but with river or lake flooding, we generally have some kind of warning. So we could have multiple days of, of use of a machine like this uh, prior to the actual flood happening and we could be pre-staging, pre-filled sandbags.
Okay.
Not that I'm trying to turn money away.
Let, let's get the one, huh?
But, for more reasons, yes.
Scott, when will, when will it be delivered and operable?
So we've checked that their, their vendor we're looking at is in stock. Uh, needless to say, they have a lot of competition for delivery right now, so um, our goal is immediately after approval today, we make the order and uh, make shipment arrangements to get here as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-three-zero, declaring the justification, amending the comprehensive resource plan and um, amending the Scott Watershed Management Organization Taxing District to include the additional twenty-five thousand.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero-three-zero. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Let's get that machine here. Thank you. We have a hard stop time today at ten AM as we do have a meeting with Metropolitan Council representatives and a tour. So I would ask commissioners to submit their um, committee reports in writing uh, to, to the clerk and then uh, we'll go on, we'll skip that item and go on to county administrator update.
I have one update, um, commissioners, and that is just a heads up. We've had some folks call about their um, tax notices, cause they're usually out by now. There was a delay with our software company, so we're expecting them to be mailed March twenty-seventh, which is ahead of the statutory timeline, but it is a couple of weeks later than we typically send them out. So um, we also will have a small video going out that explains and if people have questions, who to contact and who to talk to as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could I ask, so if somebody just wanted to come in today and pay their taxes, could they do that right, right now or would we have that number for them?
Uh, we probably would in the office, but they wouldn't have received the form yet to know.
Okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Beard.
Madam Chair, there is just one item on my report that I'd like to at least give a heads up on.
Okay.
Uh, AMC, I'm on the AMC board and they're passing around a resolution to their county engineers, asking us to pass a resolution to support for a one billion dollar increase in county state aid and county road funding. They want all eighty-seven counties to participate, but I'm looking at the numbers and I raised it at the board meeting and we did not get a satisfactory explanation that they actually understood what they were asking for. It would be just in county state aid, more than one-third of the entire Mindot budget. And so if that comes to us, we need to have a few minutes of dwell time to talk about it. Just a heads up that that's coming, you may be lobbied for it. Feel free to ask me questions offline.
Wonderful, thank you for that update. Uh, and do we need to recess for an attorney-client meeting?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Wonderful, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Very much. Uh, it's been moved in second to adjourn this meeting. I will note that following the county board meeting, we will be meeting with Metropolitan Council representatives in a workshop setting, uh, followed by a tour of various projects in, within Scott County. Um, any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.